We can rise for the pledge.
Our allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the his soul, liberty and justice for all.
Dear heavenly Father, thank you for the many blessings you have given us. Thank you for the much-needed moisture you've given us, and we pray that you send more for this coming spring, we can have the flowers and the grass and everything that you make bloom possible. Bless all of us as we go about this meeting and make decisions that need to be made. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Okay, at our last commission meeting, we had a discussion as to road department take-home vehicles, and it was after some discussion that we decided to have a workshop today in order to discuss that further. So with that, Commissioner Fryberger, I'll turn it over to you, and we can begin discussion.
Okay, the last one, we had talked about the mileage that people live away from Estancia and the, what I thought and still think, the need to be dispatched out of Estancia here at the yard. And Martine had voiced, you know, that he didn't think it would work, that it would be three to four hours delay in working each day, is that correct? And I would like, you know, for opinions, I would like to know, you know, why it would take three to four hours when our father is from Estancia, trip of the road is not over sixty miles, I believe.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Tapia, is there anything that you wanted to bring forth? I'd just like for our discussion to be organized. Did everybody who wanted to speak, is there, did you sign in on the sheet that's in the back of the room? So if you could bring that sheet up to me now, please, that way I can just call on each person that said they wanted to speak. Just kind of to maintain order now, we'll let everyone have the opportunity to speak once I call your name, and then once everybody's questions are out on the table, then at that point, you just raise your hand, and then I'll call on you at that point.
The sign-in key?
Yes. Okay, so we started with a question from Commissioner Fryberger. Martine, would you like to answer that? Michelle?
Just for clarification, since this is a workshop, are we going to require everyone to come up, or can they just speak freely from where they're sitting?
What the preference of the commission, what would we like to do?
I think whether it's...
They can speak from where they're at. I'll just say your name, and then if you want to speak, you can say yes, and if you don't want to, that's fine. Okay, so we'll begin with the question that Commissioner Fryberger had, and then Martine, if you want to respond to that.
Yeah, well, like you said, you know, the furthest one is fifty-nine miles. The closest one, you know, those typical blocks or whatnot. The response, Dr. Tapias, if we park the vehicles from our own homes, driving our own vehicles, everybody, I'm sure, you know, you start your vehicle, you get it warmed up, fifteen, twenty minutes, or whatnot, takes you half an hour to get here, takes another fifteen, twenty minutes or so, or not, or more, just to, you know, warm up the county vehicle. Then by the time you get back to the graders and the work jobs, you know, wherever we're working, then you're going to warm up the equipment, those have to be at least fifteen, ten minutes, and that's, you know, a lot of times we're out there, especially when we're hauling gravel and stuff, there's always that some of the time, the friends, there's always that, so.
And so with what?
Flat tires. You know, when we work out on the gravels and all that, and we're always getting there, we want to have those big trucks pick up nails more than regular vehicles. For some reason, they do, I don't know why, but, so gravels have to fill up, so that's usually it's a bad one. At least, you know, you fill up everything, get everything warmed up, air built up, ready to go. So by the time you get all that done, you know, you're looking, and just in the morning alone, you're looking for a couple hours there, just to get started on gravel or whatnot. Then you're looking at the afternoon, you know, you've heard the meeting, to leave at four-thirty, to get, to get back to the shop, you know, to fill up, well, then you've got to shut down at at least four o'clock to cool down the, cool down the equipment, fuel from the pickup, to the, you know, to the equipment you're using, then get back to Estancia or the yard or wherever you're filling up. There's another, you know, another hour or so in the afternoon, and just that, plus the half hour, another hour and a half in the afternoon. And now, all the guys go straight from the homes, straight to the equipment, which is usually less than half an hour from their homes, you know, is usually less than half an hour from their homes to the equipment. So I'm just saying, just on, just on a half hour alone, three hours alone, you're spending a lot more money than the cost of the fuel, I mean, of the pickups, I think that's wasting very much fuel. You know, but you'll probably, you might even save on a little bit on the diesel because you won't be blinking as much, but then the public's going to complain because they're not out there. Snow removal, some guys can't even get out of their own homes because they don't own four-wheel drives, the county vehicles are four-wheel drive. But they can't get out, then whoever can get out is going to have to start running around and getting people out, you know, so that's going to come technically everywhere. A little more foot kind of thing to start, you know, snow, removing snow at that point, so. But I'm just saying, in my opinion alone, I feel, I feel the need to do what we've always done, you know, if there's any sort of abuse or anything going on, you know, as far as public-wise or anything there, we should be informed of that, and we need to deal with those people that are accusing anybody of doing anything. It needs to be a face-to-face deal, I feel, that's what I feel. Because I don't feel, I don't feel that any of the guys are myself, it doesn't matter how many things they hide, it's already, you're free to check whatever you want, I mean, I know there are, there are always one around town, but that's all they are, they're moving, you know. So I don't know if you want to have anything to add to it.
Yes, please.
But it's hard because if we start going to the yard, kind of like Mark, we're going to lose a lot of time because the guys don't mark their time that when they go straight to the equipment and start early. I mean, most of these guys, if we're working, wherever we're working, at Mountaineers, you know, well, they leave the house at five o'clock, five-thirty to get there and get the trucks ready so we can start at seven o'clock to get going. If we're not going to be having to come here every day, well, then we're not going to get started until eight-thirty, nine. Guys got to shut down, what about the blade operators that do have to stay and blade it, to spread the material in the hall? Now, they're going to be putting overtime every single day because they got to come back all the way to Stunt Hill to shut down, to turn the truck in so they can go home. You know, now they work their hour and a half, hour every day before we're hauling most of them, they don't mark their time, they stay over that little bit of time, because, I mean, that's kind of their job, I mean, they're the blade operators, they're there to spread, that's what they do. And we start moving everything over here, and it's just going to push, and then there's a fire going on, but by the time we respond to it, the whole mountain converts, all of the heat they convert, all the minority convert, and now we've got to come up, pick up a vehicle, going back to where our equipment already is, it's just not, I just don't see it being real cost-effective. The guys are going to work half as much, and we're going to be running more mileage because we're going to be going back and forth from the county. All of the guys here mainly go straight to the dockside. I mean, we have very few that come to the yard every day. If it's muddy out there, well, you know, sometimes you do have to, I mean, because there's nothing we can do out there that, seven o'clock in the morning, going to start it, it's real bad, but ninety percent of the time, the guy are on the machine at seven o'clock after they're gone. I don't see that having to change everything to Sunday or... Now, if there's something we're doing wrong, that we need to change what we do, maybe that, but, I mean, everything, all the complaints we've gotten, we've changed, we put meters on everything, I mean, everybody has rights, what they do, when they go, where they're at, you know, everybody knows what's going on, and you want to know where all those guys are. Like a guy that's in Encino that he works part-time, there is no way he's going to afford to work and drive all the way over here in the morning to go right back.
I think there'll be exceptions, I think Jake will be an exception. He doesn't work, he works exclusively over there. But there's times, I mean, Martin, you talked about going straight to the job, you know, there's times if you're working over in Moriarty, don't your people have to come through here to go to the job?
No, they go it shorter, go to Killian.
But they still come through, basically, to go around?
They go to Killian, you know, and cut across the, go over there, go there. And everybody that I get to go, yeah, I mean, they all work about the other way. They get it from there, it's faster to go through, go through here.
Commissioner Tapia, do you have any questions?
Well, I was actually the one who asked for this on Wednesday's meeting, only because for us, we can sit up here and we can make decisions, but if we don't know exactly what you guys do, and for me, I wanted to have a better understanding of what it is that you do, just, I mean, I'm new at this, so if you live in District One, raise your hand. Lonny's? Lonny's district, Moriarty area, District Two?
That would be that, Fran.
And then District Three? So the majority of our crew is coming out of District Three, okay. Because for me, I mean, we can make decisions up here, but then, I don't know, I watch Undercover Boss, and everybody makes the decisions up here, and then, once the president of the corporation goes in and actually does the work, then they're like, why are we doing this? Well, it came from up here. So for me, I want to know and hear from you guys what it is you're doing and how it's going to affect your life if these changes are made. And our job is to look at the monies that's being spent on gas, look at over the years and see if it's gone up or down, or if it's maintained a level. So for me, it's, I, that's what I wanted to know, where everybody was coming from and, you know, how that's working, and then we'll compare the operating budget to see exactly what you guys have spent over the last eight or nine years.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any more questions before we take comment?
No, no problem.
Okay, so with the road staff, Antonio Ortiz, do you have a comment? Okay, I'm sorry, some of these are signatures instead of in print, so raise your hand if you'd like to speak, and then I'll call you to the podium. Anyone? Pete? Or, I'm sorry, go ahead, speak for me, Michelle.
Well, Commissioner, I was just, it's how it affects, it affects, and I think in the whole, as a road department, like, the biggest example I can give is on snowstorms. Every individual guy has a separate district. We pretty much haven't calculated to how we go about pushing our districts, how, how things are supposed to run, what roads you're supposed to do, the roads, if you first, last, you know, and in a specific order on how to do them. And if we have to come to Estancia to get our vehicle to start that, how many guys are actually going to come? Personally, I don't feel the need, for me, as well as any of the guys, in a two-foot snowstorm or two-and-a-half foot snowstorm, to beat my pickup, to get over here to push roads, you know, I don't even know if that's considered my job, even if it be on a Friday, and that's kind of a question I have, is that, is that still considered our job? If it snows Thursday night at six o'clock, are we still, are we still mandatory to come push snow on Friday, being that that is our day off? Because that's, if something happens to my personal vehicle, that's out of my pocket, that's my money, that's in my pocket, and I lost it, you know? So that's a big question, me and a lot of other guys too. And not only that, but in runtime, the last snowstorms, the biggest, an example I'd give, the last snowstorm, I started at three o'clock, or at three days in a row, one-thirty in the morning. Some guys started at three, some guys started at four, just depends on, if you know how many roads you got to do, how long it'll take you, some districts are bigger than others, it depends, the length of the road, shorter roads take you more, because you have to do intersections, you have to do a bunch of stuff. And if we're at a set time to come to the shop, and we have to be here at seven o'clock in the morning, it's going to push our runtime so much far back. And I'm sure you guys know as well as we do, you guys probably get as much complaints as we do, even being out there on this equipment, constantly have people stopping us, why this, why that, you know, it's just adding that much more pressure on our job, is just the way I feel.
You know, it's kind of interesting that we talk about, everything about snow removal or when the mud or anything like that, but those are very few days compared to the whole year. So, you know, there could be exceptions. When it snows, you know, there could be, you know, where you wouldn't take to pick up to where you could take it. What we're talking about, or what I'm talking about, and I believe the commission is talking about, is the commuting. You know, it winds up on the majority of the days, it's just a commute vehicle to the equipment, wherever it may be, whether it's in District One, whether it's in District Two, you know, it is still, this is the focal point here, Estancia. And so, you know, it becomes the question as to, is it a need? We have, what I was given was eighteen employees and seventeen pickups. We have a maintenance person right now that's in dire need of a pickup, and, you know, we can't afford a pickup. So when you take a look at everything and see seventeen pickups for seventeen individuals, then it becomes where it looks on paper that, you know, maybe we need to take a second look at this and maybe work something. When I was in risk management, I took my pickup home during the winter, that was all I took it home for, because I had to respond to wrecks due to the ice. And so there's exceptions that can be made, just like what we talked about with Jake in Encino, that's the only place he works. I don't know if he ever comes over here, does he, to work on the crew? So, you know, and we may take, you know, look and see if it is, and Jake may not want to, you know, if he doesn't get a pickup to come by. But I know when I first spoke, it was that the equipment was within a half a mile of homes. And so I don't know if that's where you parked the equipment, if that's what's going on, or...
A lot of them are, we're going to have them on, not, most of them are, if you're working as part of, each of these guys, they're working part of their district, that's where they leave their equipment. Then, if they're not going, if they're whatever, of course, they'll all come back, then they'll start again, continue their district until, you know, until it gets better again. Or if emergencies come up, then they have to come over and back with the blade back there. But there's three, four different places that each, each, each employee leaves the grid out. It's not just one area. So we're all over the company, these guys don't come to the shop every day, they come every two, two days or whatnot, or two days to fuel up, to have enough to fill them in the grid. That's something we do emphasize, I think, is that keep the grid full overnight so it doesn't get any moisture in the tank, there's, filling water and fuel and whatnot. So they have to be full, but most of these tanks will fill them up, you know, twice, twice, you know, two days. So they shouldn't live, twice a week, they probably fill up twice a week in the pickups and in the graders. But we're also saying, no, it's not only that, it comes down to, to, to employees regers. You know, we haven't had, we all know, we haven't had a reger in about three, four years. Five years. These guys, what, it's been three years? But, but anyways, but what comes down to, these guys are special, and I don't know, when we interviewed every one of them, we did say, yes, one year, one year benefits is having a county pickup. And that's the reason why they were going to cut the job at this, this amount of money. Even though it's by any other county, you know, they start on way higher than, way higher than, I'm surprised half these guys haven't gone yet, but I, I kind of feel we do have some very good employees if that benefit is taken with them. You know, they're good employees, they have good crew right now, everybody working together, and we found the job done. We found the job done this year with these snowstorms better than any of the lives in here. We've had, we've had even call emergency, you know, calling an emergency situation and whatnot. It's because we have a better crew now, and we have better equipment. Equipment is a big deal, it's a very big deal. We have good equipment, they're going to keep you going, you know, and a good person that can run it, it cuts down on time of doing a lot of these, even bladeing, I mean, the horsepower of the person you guys have, it's crazy. It's not, it's not easy to maintain the horsepower of a road, the person, the generator. Then if you start getting wet on top of the level, heck, you know, you get one, two days later, it starts coming out, well, everybody's a priority, not just one, everybody, the whole county's a priority, you try to get there, that's what you can, but sometimes it seems like one person's more important than the other person, and to, I don't look at it, I mean, I look at the whole county's a priority. We will get to that as soon as we can, and usually in three days, we can get it, you know, like a great environment. So we do, we do the best we can with what we have, you know?
Martin, you make a good point when you talk about the salary. That's something that's always been very interesting to me, because I do feel that for a department is underpaid. But, so just to be clear, you guys have said you haven't gotten raises in three years or five years? Because I'm pretty sure that there was...
I thought it was a year, that's, that's three years.
Julie?
Yes, sir.
What did the road department do today?
What did they do today?
Yes.
As far as, as...
Where they were. Where did they go? What did they do?
They're, they're in their respective districts, bladeing, joshing.
Okay, see, that's one of the problems I have, and I've asked y'all for, you know, the monthly report, which we're starting to get, but again, there's, I think, you know, until I know better, you know, it's one of the things is not knowing where you're at. I haven't seen you on District One.
I was there this morning.
Was there this morning?
Yeah, I bet I went to...
Yeah, what roads?
Martinez to Aldrich.
Martinez, and where at?
From Mexico to Aldrich.
Mr. Davis? You know where they were in your district?
Today, no, sir.
Commissioner Tapias?
No, I think you did, but...
See, that's one of the problems, is again, the communication. And I can tell you that I'm right across, I'm right across...
I'm going to call you guys every morning and let you know when that's the more that...
The work schedule. I have, I have a form that I made, that copied off of the, the county department's form, and all it does is where you can list down. We talked about last time, that the way the report was coming out from Trish, is if we get into a lawsuit, then we have to know exactly where you were, to where we can tell. We had a lawsuit on a stop sign, and the paperwork that came in was replacing stop signs, but it didn't say anything about the stop sign that we were sued on. And so we have to be very articulate in talking about where we're working, when we're working. And especially with Julie being the county manager, you don't have to tell us, but one of the ideas that I want is I want to be able to submit what roads I won't work on that month. I want to be, my ideal would be to split the road department up in three districts, and each commissioner run the road department, as to what they want done.
I don't know, maybe I'm a little confused, but I just went to training, and that wasn't a part of my job description, so I, I don't, I mean, I get that we need to have an idea where they're at and what they're doing, and my job as a commissioner is to make sure that they're not spending more than what's in their budget, and they're not doing things that are inappropriate, but I guess I'm misunderstanding my, my role as a commissioner, because that's not what I got from the training that was up there. I am a policymaker, I am not a supervisor, so I'm a little confused of, you know, me taking over my district road department.
All it takes as a policymaker to change it is change the policy. That's all it takes.
I understand that, but our, our job as a commission is to make sure that if this is something that we want, we, and I, and I get, I get that we need to start being a little more careful, that if there is a lawsuit, that we can track back and go, this is where they were, this is the road. But I guess for me, I don't feel like I need to be as involved as maybe as what you're saying. I mean, I get that we need to, we need to be able to answer where they're at, I get that, but I don't need for them to answer to me where they're at, I just need to know that they're grading the roads, and that they're on a, a cycle, and when they get those roads done, and the cycle starts again.
I've got, Madam Chair, can I make a comment?
Yes, please.
For Commissioner Fryberger and Commissioner Tapia, just a little bit of, maybe just a real brief background of the last five years. I know that Commissioner Tapia asked me last month what the county has done to move forward because there are still comments about fuel usage and consumption and things like that. So, real briefly, when, when we started looking at the road department five years ago, and if any of you guys want to interject, please do, and help me make sure that I'm accurate in saying this, but we have fuel tanks in several different locations throughout the county, even on some operators' properties, we had fuel tanks. We did not, we took all those fuel tanks away, we only get fuel at the yard now or at Ponce's, so that made fuel usage a lot more trackable. We did not have locked fuel caps on the graders, so basically, if the graders were parked on private or public property, anybody that wanted to come siphon fuel out could siphon fuel out. We put locking fuel caps on the blades. We did not have meters on the fuel tanks on the pickups, we now have meters on the fuel tanks on the pickups. So we've made a lot of adjustments as far as monitoring. I know that the guys have implemented, excuse me, the foremen have implemented the fuel sheets and mileage sheets and things like that, so they have a pretty good handle of what is going where, and what equipment is using fuel. Some of the other things that we've looked at is this year, our leases are up on our blades, and we're going to get new blades. Whichever way we go, whether we go with a cat blade or a deer blade, they do have a tracking mechanism on them where the blades can actually be tracked via GPS. So we know where they're at, whether they're idling or running, what gear they're running in, so we're going to know if the blade is idling, or if it's pulling ditches, or if it's running in sixth gear, basically. So that's going to give us another mechanism to track consumption and usage for fuel. So we are taking steps to move forward with, with the fuel issue. And as far as the, the equipment issue, I did print for you guys, and this isn't, it's not absolutely accurate comparison, what I did is just printed two budgets, one from the fiscal year 2007, 2008, and then one for the current year, 2011, 2012. And if you look at it, the first page is revenues, and the 402 fund, which I've highlighted on there is the road fund. In 2007, 2008, the revenues for road fund were 1.9 million. In 1112, the revenues were 1.2 million. So we're not bringing in any more money now than we were four years ago. If you turn the next page, this is the expenditure budget, the 402 fund, we had a million, sixty-three thousand in road fund, and in the shop fund, forty-four thousand, those were the expenditure lineups in '07, '08. In 1112, the 402 fund expenditures were 1.2 million, so we're a hundred and, what are we, $185,000 more now expenditures than we had then. And the shop expenditures are actually $10,000 less than they were five years ago. So I think we've done a pretty good job as far as managing the budget. In the meantime, we got rid of the old blades, we got the guys new equipment, which is now almost five years old, so we're looking at getting upgrading again. We sold the old blades, and we bought dump trucks, belly dumps, what else did we buy? Four new pickups.
Oh, boy, dump truck trailer.
The roller, we bought the roller, so we've upgraded the fitness. And all that newer equipment is more fuel-efficient, more user-friendly, and I think, I think that we've done a pretty good job working with them. At the same time, we're dealing with our state projects are getting cut each year a little bit more and a little bit more. So we're, it's just, it's just a little bit of history, so you guys know that we have been working towards trying to make progress and trying to make everything more accountable. And the other thing, and I don't know how much of, I know that it is, it's written in the personnel policy that the guys have the option of taking the vehicle, so those are things that we have...
It's written in the personnel policy?
Yeah, we can, I'm looking for you. Who's copy that?
That was Ron, because we signed that up, thinking we're friends, we have to pay $2.50 a day to be able to take our vehicles home, you know, we're having to take any county vehicle.
It says, according to our county policy, all road department employees acting to receive the use of a county vehicle for the purposes of traveling to and from their home and work shall reach the following: The value of the use of a county vehicle shall be treated as taxable income in accordance with the internal law. So I'm not completely sure if we would not be doing so considered taxable.
Since they shall be provided, or if they elect?
Because if they elect, so it's... The other, the other thing that... The other, the other thing that this is more of a, of a budgetary issue when it comes to budgets, and we're getting closer, is all the forecasting that I heard last week in Santa Fe was that the Secure Road Schools funding that we received for four years is gonna be phased out this year. So, it's possible that it's gonna be reoperated at the federal level this year, but Jonathan Smith told us that we really did not need to depend on that as a revenue source after, even in this budget year, we should, if we are lucky enough to receive it, then we should treat that allocation as a budget increase and not depend on it. And that's a hundred and ten thousand, I think, of revenues that come to the road department. So, that's unfortunate too, and we will have to make adjustments to account for that when and if it happens.
On the second paragraph of the sheet that I just handed out, it said, "Not exempt road department employees." Who in the road department is not exempt? Nobody?
We don't have exempt employees.
So, that just simply means that everybody is entitled to overtime. Okay, um, who was next to speak? Who'd like to speak next? Any of the other staff? Yes, sir.
I'll, I'll just word occasionally. The pickups are taken away, uh, obviously considered emergency, because that's what I was told to be started. Snowstorms and stuff like that, that we had to be here even when the rest of the courthouse, uh, basically got off, off the schedule. So, we still be mandatory to be, be here.
Okay, so we'll open that up.
In the personnel pro, in the personnel policy, are they required to respond to emergency with department?
They are required to respond on call.
Okay.
And if the pickups were taken away, would that still be a threat?
Against what?
If the pickups were, were taken away, would that still be a threat? Would we still be on call?
Yes.
Not entirely sure about that considering we require them to get out in snowstorms in on-call situations, I'm not entirely sure. Is that a question you need to write down for legal?
We'll check on that.
Hi.
How about floods, fire? You know, we, we do a lot for the fires department. They always call on us, and we're always going and shutting off a lot of fires around this county, and that is not in the policy about, the snow removal might be, but the fires, the flooding, they're not in there, so. And we're always, you know, having to go and, oh, no, it's flooding or whatnot, we'll call that, you know.
I think an emergency is an emergency. I don't think there's anything that would differentiate between a snowstorm or a fire.
But if you're requiring us to, to be guys to blow out, and they don't have it, because I don't know if that, that's a loaded question, and you bring up all those situations.
That's what we just said, is that there's something that we need to check with legal on.
Well, I have, sorry, excuse me. On that, last year we went, we had a fire in, uh, in one of Plank's Corners, or whatever. By chance, Anthony was in town, and he, I was, he was on, someone called him against an airport, I don't know. I came to get gas here at the Mustang, which I was in town. Well, he couldn't get a hold of anybody else, I said, well, let's go. And I said, I'll go with you. And then I called Martin, fine, go, go for it. We started from here since we had two blades here, cause they were, they were in the shop getting maintenance. Well, we're driving all the way over there, but if we, if he couldn't get no, get a hold of nobody, and this is where I'm coming with this emergency stuff, is if the boys ain't gonna answer their phone, where are you gonna get help? They're on their day off. Uh, it was lucky that I was here and he answered his phone. You know, I mean, you're not paying us overtime like that for emergencies. I mean, it, it's something that we've done, you know? You're on call, go, go get it, go, go. I mean, you're, you're, you're saying we're at 24-hour, 7, 24/7 on call? We're not. I mean, once we go home, we wanna go home too, we want our weekends, and that's how I see it, you know? I mean, if I'm in Albuquerque and I have to get over here, well, that's gonna take me a two hours or whatever it is to get over. You know, I mean, that would be, the bosses of foremen would have to say, okay, this crew here on the weekend, or whatever, all, this whole crew's gonna be on the weekend, and you're gonna cover both sides, and you have a list, but that would be kind of ridiculous. Are we gonna be able to afford to have everybody on call? I don't know. That's up to you, or whoever runs the budget. I mean, if you're gonna be on call, you gotta be home and make sure you answer the phone. And being on call, you usually get a different pay or some kind of pay. You know, that's how I'm trying to say, I mean, it's just, this way, we know that it's our job. We, we take that in our, in ourselves, working here, because we don't get paid very much money. And if we're lucky to have a job, I'm grateful for one, but we, we like our county, we love doing for the public. But, you know, taking these vehicles away from the boys, I think, I think you're gonna lose a whole bunch, Martin said that. I think the guys that live the furthest and the guys that are making nothing, that's their incentive to work for you guys, to work for the company. Just, just that little bit helps, because nobody else is seeing that. Just, just, and it's, it's just something that the guys like to do. They like to operate and they, they, they love to live here, and it's just benefit for them. And that's all.
So, possibly is a concern that, and this is to the supervisor, because you know the feedback from your staff, but are you getting feedback from your staff saying that if we take the vehicles, they don't wanna work, they don't wanna work for the department?
Is that true?
Not wanting to work, but I've been out before the department for it. It's not the, it's not the working matter, it's the affordability matter, you know? Gas ain't cheap anymore, you're making nine dollars an hour, gets a little rough.
And then you can understand our dilemma, that when we're stopped talking about cutting things and trying to keep the budget intact, then we're fighting the same thing, and we're trying to look at this as one possibility.
And we also have, well, we have that from the mechanic, we pull the trucks away, so you can unload all of these tools at home and then bring the truck back in, and then take the truck back and put all those tools back in. These, why didn't leave the truck parked in the shop with five thousand dollars worth of tools sitting inside it?
I think that would probably fall under an exception. All of our mechanics take their pickups home because of that very same thing. They have to provide their own tools.
Right, we've used on the job many, many times, uh, cause you know, we have one mechanic, our mechanic's a computer, you know, it's just not what anyone expected him to be here every day. We've been out snowstorming, for instance, last snowstorm, two hydraulic hoses. I mean, for Josh, it would, it would have probably been, well, I can only guess a downtime amount, because Josh had two of the roof shavings. Look, I had the tools in my pickup, and we just got it done and got them machines back on, back on track going. You know, I, I'm not gonna leave my personal stuff here, I mean, I have bolt cutters, tools, wrenches, sockets, you name it, I have it in there because I know eventually we're gonna need it. And it's, I know it's not expected of me, but it's just something I've done for a long time, and it makes the job go, we get stuff done, and, you know, I, that's another deal that, that there's gonna be a lot of downtime too. Yeah, I mean, my pickup's parked, I don't wanna leave all my personal tools here, and me not knowing what's going on with them, you know?
Commissioner, where would you propose that the vehicles be stored in the, in the yard? And is the, the yard is a secure area or?
Secure, it's got a good fit, but it doesn't mean people ain't gonna hack their way in. If someone wants to go in, they'll get in anyway, so.
At this time, we actually have cameras that are gonna be put onto the yard.
Okay. Okay, is there any other comment from the staff? Tracy?
Well, obviously, I'm really tired, but, and, Bonnie mentioned, or Commissioner Freiber, apologize, mentioned about the cameras. Um, I, I did bring it to the county manager's attention via, well, via telephone call last week, that I personally had a situation with one of my, my department's vehicles, which when it is not out and about, it is in an area that is camera controlled, it's part of the dispatch center. And it was discovered that in spite of that, there was an issue. It appears that, and this has been reported to the sheriff's department, that the lock cylinder, which I'm really not understanding a lot of, to me, that's a technical thing, but a lock cylinder, somebody actually managed to remove it from the van. And that's not a vehicle that I see very often, because it's, it's not something I need to see very often. At first, I thought the vehicle had been hit, but it was brought to my attention that based on where this, where the problem was with the dent, and then noticing that the lock cylinder came out, that it was very likely this occurred with cameras watching that someone attempted to remove the cylinder and did vandalize our vehicle. Uh, I won't say in plain sight, because, you know, there's not someone who's sitting there watching the camera at our moments in the parking lot, but, I mean, the camera itself is not necessarily gonna prevent our vehicles from getting damaged. And this is not as far as there being personal vehicles, but I know that these guys have come out when asked to for, for my particular program. Yes, I know they, they get paid to respond, but they have brought my DWI golf cart to me at different events here in town, um, up in Moriarty, and whenever they've been asked to. And I don't know if that's something that the commission is aware of, that they have been asked to, and not only been asked to, but they, they responded to.
Thank you, Tracy. Any other comment?
I just, I wanna know where we're gonna park our vehicles, our personal vehicles. Am I, is the county gonna insure them and we park them inside of them or on the, on the car? We don't have a parking area, it's mainly for us to park in, in county yard, you know, one DWI vehicle. How, how is that gonna affect us? If, if one of the boys comes around and our vehicles are here, we're bringing a blade over here in the semi and we're parking in there, what's going on there if they run over our cars? And I do it on purpose, it just sometimes if you, I bump them. That's just another question.
I mean, a personal vehicle to take to work, you know, I mean, you, you have your insurance and everything like that on it, and then the county, I'm not for sure what it would cover if one was, if Betty's vehicle was broken too, well, that is parked here. I'm not for sure what that would be. Cause we have employees that, that park all over the administrative building here during the day.
So, are, are we gonna have an assigned designated area or we're just gonna park wherever? That's what I, I mean, are we gonna have an assigned spot for just the-
Well, I think we're putting the horse before the cart, you know, the cart before the horse. Cause usually the horse goes before the cart, I think. Okay, so we'll put the cart in front of the horse. But, you know, what, what this workshop is for is where we can get more information, you know, and perhaps work something out. You know, what we're looking at is, is fuel consumption and cost, the vehicle usage, and what we're trying to do is to work something that will work for everybody. Uh, I will say that, you know, if, if, I have a concern, I think with Commissioner Chad is that if we're saying that if we don't get the vehicles, that we'll have to look for something else. Right now, we have an average of twenty people apply for every position that we have with the highway department. So, there's plenty of people that would take the jobs to come in, and I'm not saying that we want to lose everyone of you. But what I'm saying though is, is to use that as a, a negotiating tool or some type of tool to use to, you know, keep the vehicles, that's not what we're looking at at all. What we're looking at is trying to save the county money. And taking in consideration of what Martin and Leonard have said about getting close proximity to the work, uh, the response time will all be taken in consideration. And then it'll be a decision made by this panel, including Joy, uh, the input that she may have to it.
Commissioner Tapia? Joy, do you have any further comment?
Here, can I show you a neat real quick? I make a bunch of copies for everybody I can, so. These are things that we have done, trying to keep that, that seems like what's coming up. These are the sheets they fill out every day for the equipment, this is the fuel sheet they fill out, and you guys have seen this before.
What's that? I, uh, this is one, makes it a little bit easier and a little bit, so.
This is whatever they fill up out of a tank, so like, uh, the tanks here are out of Hahnsteins', they write out what goes here, and then what, what they pump out of their trucks goes on this sheet, right here on the fuel part, they mark whatever gallons comes out of the pickup. Me and Martin go through both of these every time they turn them in the time sheet there to make sure the gallons do match. This is all equipment, the days are on it, everything's good, zero hours, everything gets turned in. And it keeps coming up, this fuel problem that we're having going on, this feed coming up a lot.
This is form, this form that you created, does this encompass all of these three forms?
Except for this one is more of a tank, uh, like for the tanks in the back of the pickup. And here it shows coming in, uh, fuel of the equipment used, if they used the material, what type it was, starting mileage, ending mileage, kind of where they worked on, start timing time, and, uh, we don't have a, a starting time on these, I don't believe, do you, Leonard?
No, not at all.
A starting time, no.
Because that's just, that's for each day when they get started, because they turn all their roads they dirt, they do during the day, they turn them in on their worksheet, and they turn it into just the other sheet, which has the fuel that went into that blade that day, so that's where the field goes, or their dump truck, or their dig, or pickup, or they put fuel into out of their truck, that's what it does. And the fuel keeps coming up for some reason, and saying our budget, our budget, we don't have for five years without not making no more money, no more revenue for our budget, the fuel cost is not up by a dollar fifty, two dollars a gallon, and we still have a game to come ask the mission for no money for it. But they keep saying it's the fuel that's the problem. We're still doing the same thing, we've done actually more. Same amount of money.
I think we're all in that same boat.
Yeah, we've cut a lot, and we've been asked to cut, we've cut a lot of money from it, you know? We've never hesitated to help the county out of, out of fines, you know? And you, you finally, thanks to Julie, finally we can cut our budget back, you know? Two years ago, we weren't even allowed to use half our money, you know? I don't know where it go, we wouldn't go where to find it, but, you know, finally we get to use a lot of it. And that's how we can do a row here extra, a row there extra, with each year whatnot, after our, our state projects, you know? We didn't have the funding to do that before.
Well, there, and Madam Chair, just for clarification purposes, that, since you guys may not be aware, the general fund did borrow at least one of the road department's revenue sources every year for, for years.
I remember speaking to you when I first became commissioner and asked if you ever paid back. That when you borrow something, it's usually meant to be paid back, and we never did.
We did, but it took several years.
Yeah, so.
And one, one other comment that I had is you were talking about the signs and the policies. We actually, I just met with Martin and Leonard this morning, and last week I got a sample sign policy that one of the counties that just implemented as far as sign maintenance and retro reflectivity and all of those- as far as sign maintenance and retro reflectivity and all of those issues that are coming up. And I put that on Wednesday's agenda just for discussion purposes, so we could look at adopting a similar policy. Because we've been talking about it for a year.
Yeah.
But we finally found a policy that another county has adopted.
Yeah. That's what I had, ma'am, too.
Any closing comments from anybody?
Mistress, I think taking away the vehicles from all of the pickup, especially the blade hands, anybody, it ain't going to do no good. We need a full day to get these roads done. There's no way we can come over here, take a while to warm everything up, then get to our blades, warm it up, take our 15-minute break, take our half-an-hour break, and then take our other 15-minute break. Be blading for, what, maybe two or three hours a day? Now we need a full eight, 10 hours to be blading roads. We can't just be blading a mile a day. I guess we're building, I guess we're building roads or whatnot, for instance, to build a road, take a mile or whatnot. But if you guys want all your roads bladed and gone through, we need a full seven, eight, 10 hours without taking our breaks, which we don't even take our breaks. We don't take our lunch breaks, we don't take our breaks for nine, 10, whenever they are. We don't even know when our breaks are. Sometimes we stay late, like Leonard says, and we don't even mark it down. We do it because we like working for the public and we like doing it. Taking this benefit that's from us is not going to, it just, that brings it down, that brings us down a little bit from what we have to hassle out there to get these things done. Now, Mr. Fieber, you said a while ago that you don't know what we do, but you guys know. We were never even properly introduced to our commissioners. You guys ought to go out there, I've seen Vanessa once in a while on the road, she knows what we do. But the rest of you ought to go out there and see what we do. This ain't paved roads, this ain't pavement. This ain't highway department, this is county, these are dirt roads. You got phone lines, you got gas lines, you got fences, you got public up and down, you got publics, you know, waving at you or throwing your finger. You know, but we need to get these roads in shape, and it takes a lot. It takes a lot. We can't just be out there just for an hour, hour and a half a day. We have to put a full, and taking away our vehicles from everybody here on our response times to fires, have Leonard's called me, Martin's called me, to come all the way to the shop to get my pickup and then go get my blade, by that time, someone's house is going to be burned down. Instead, we're already on response time, and we're already there. And exceptions, if you take my truck away or whatever, I think we're going to take everybody's away. Exceptions, I don't, you know, I don't know about that. Exception Jake, okay, way over from Encino, well, then I want to switch back to the Encino district then. I don't think that's fair. I don't think that's fair, to take, to have just exceptions of who and who. You know, especially with blade hands. We need our pickups, been blading here for a long time, commissioners. With all these guys, some of, you know, everybody's been doing a great job. We got these roads going, and what, you know, everybody's getting what they need to know what to do. And it's, uh, it's like a letdown to say, "We're going to do this, guys, we're going to do this to you." Well, that's not right. And I think, I don't know if you, I don't think you're going to save any more money, sir, commissioners, than taking our pickups away. You guys need to go out there with us every once in a while and see what we're doing. And see what we're doing. If the public are saying something about us, come out there and see what we're doing. See our hours on our blades, see our miles on our blades, what we're doing. If you want more production, well, we're giving all that we can. I don't know what else more you need. That's my opinion. But taking away our pickups, I don't think it's going to solve any, guys. We're going to do our job, we'll come and do our job, yes, we will. We'll be here every day in our pickups, but you won't get those full amount of hours on those roads. And that's my opinion.
I'll have to second the opinion, that kind of value, but I'll put a point, you know, and it's, it's not really the, we feel down paid, it's kind of not feeling being supported. You know, we do things because we want to. I've done it for a long time because I want to, I want to, we want to, not necessarily to see, but we want to get stuff done. Uh, for instance, one of your jobs that you had proposed, Leonard didn't ask me, Martin didn't ask me, nobody asked me. We're cutting brush on Snake Hill, we're moving brush, getting ready to wire up the road. I mean, for the amount of brush that was on the road, we couldn't, driving a dump truck at five miles to a gallon, four miles to a gallon hauling brush, you don't haul very much. I like, my personal opinion, I, I draw my personal flat, I tell you, I haul brush because you haul three times as much. It's stuff we do and the guys do, everybody does it. You take it upon yourself, you make decisions upon yourself as you see it to be done. We try to do them to help the county. We try to do them, you know, to better ourselves. You know, nobody here is doing anything to give a hand, I mean, you know, you can't, you can't go out very far here. You do it because we love our jobs, our bosses treat us great. The commission, you guys have all, we haven't had a whole lot of interaction with you guys, but from up till now, we feel you guys have treated us great, you know. You guys haven't bothered us, you guys haven't done nothing wrong to us. Joy's great, I mean, she supports us 100%. And just being this, it's, you guys, really like France said, you guys don't see what we do out there, what we elect ourselves to do. And it's not your fault, it's not our fault, it's just stuff that happens. But it just feels like we're trying to step up and we're just getting pushed backwards. And that's just the way that it's feeling, and I'm, I'm not only, I'm like France said.
Well, PD, like PD said a while ago, we all have our own tools. Now, it's pretty neat that Leonard got me that truck that has a lift on it, and heck, I can take the tire off and pick it up, and the lift goes down. Hey, that'd be nice to get them in all trucks for some of the blade men when they have flat tires. When we can't get Josh out there to give us some air. You know, we let, put that lift down, lay the tire down, and we're gone. Come to fix it, we fix it ourselves. You know, and like PD Ed said, we have all our own tools, we use all our own stuff. We don't use the county stuff at all. We have all our own tools. Sometimes we do if Josh is around, but we've got all our own stuff.
And the pickup is stopped tomorrow, it was donated by the sheriff.
Yeah.
They had a, from the county, just a little bit. And you know, you know how many of those tires are. So it just works out where, where you don't have to count another guy out there to help him donate a flat tire, you back right up to it, and fall right on there, and fix it right up, you know, on the truck. But really, Mike, it's a real nice deal, and he just happened to be lucky that they didn't need it anymore, and donated to us, so we appreciated that, but it's a fair thing.
We're actually all down on control truck.
Yeah.
Most of the time, you load any by yourself anyways. You know, you've, you've got to pick up that tire. You can't have someone come way from here and you go to A boat and might have a flat tire. You know, I mean, or anywhere in the county. We usually pick up ourselves, we're hurting. You know, and we, we don't want to ask for these Tommy lifts, because we don't have the budget. So we do it on our own. You know, we have to make do and park the truck in a ditch and try to roll it, you know, try to make do and how to do it.
We've even put our own winches, our personal winches on our trucks to roll up thin tires. Never asked the county, you know, we've done a lot of stuff on our own.
How much is a Tommy lift?
Oh, 3,000.
Probably three to five, come through 5,000.
And it's not even, you know, mostly, we hardly ever use it, huh, guys? Sometimes we get flat, Josh uses you around, and we get by air, and we fix it. If we need to have it, just going back to bringing our pickups to the shop, that's just, you know, that's taking away, like Martin said a while ago, when we're hauling, we're trying to finish projects, we got to be there, we got to finish those projects. Coming over here, picking up pickups, going, warming up the semis, then fixing flat tires, that's half a day. They're going to haul maybe two or three loads, and that's it. Then the blade men stay there after spreading and start charging overtime. And then coming back to the shop at eight, nine o'clock at night. It's just very different, Mr. Fieber, than the, than the state, you know, we just, we're very different. You come out there with us and go out there and with the truck drivers and when we're building roads and see what we do, and then you'll see, you'll understand what I'm talking about. You know, it's not, like I'm saying, it's not no bad idea. It's not no bad idea. But just on the county road, I don't think it would work, especially with all the roads that all of us have. You know, and we are, we take a lot of pride in the roads, and we like to get on them and stay on them for at least seven, eight hours. It takes that much, you know, to fix them up nice or to get on where they're passable, because right now, they're really missed. And we're doing what we can, and there's no way we can finish in a couple hours. We need to be on them.
How long does it take each, um, so each person has a district that they take care of? So approximately, how long is, does it take for them to maintain that?
It just depends on what you're doing, dry, wet, mud, rain, sleet.
I figure, I figure usually you can do, the guys can probably do, it was requested a long time ago for them to at least do three miles a day. These guys will do seven to 10 miles a day.
If.
You know, and it depends, it depends on if you work a lot more than the other roads, but first time, just a little bit of, yeah, turn left. The guy might be here, the distance to the gas. But each, each blade man, yeah. Look, which, this is on my side, and that's District Six, is all right here, one degree. Seven's all, see the difference in a lot of different little roads there? And then that's done, I'm just, this is done, done that because the towns are involved there, too. All the towns, big district, I don't know. District 10 is the biggest one over here, but it's over far away, there's not a lot of, there's a lot of cutbacks. Same thing with District 11 over here, this is Encino.
Well, I know that you prepared for me originally a while back. You guys gave me a list of the persons' names and the roads that they did, and that was very helpful to me. Have you guys provided them with the same?
It's a little different on the map, you know, all these new roads that you, that I gave you.
And then you added up the mileage at the end?
Yes, yes, and all the mileage, you know, this one has a hundred, this is the biggest one, I think, because it's 34 miles. For one person, that's, that's Joseph, he's up there, I don't know. You know, District 9, I believe, is red, okay, it's about 117, I think, something like 117 miles. Smallest district in miles is 85 miles, a lot of mileage.
So your minimum, Danny said, is three miles a day, but some can go up to seven, it just depends on the day?
A lot of them do seven or ten, you know, but still, I think, if you're looking, you have to, most of the time, none of these other roads quickly, so we don't have to do them for a long time. But these other ones have to maintain three, three times, you know, a mile cut over, or a quarter. But also, I'm just saying, it's...
So you can't tell us, on Monday, you're going to be here, and on Tuesday, you're going to be here, and on Wednesday?
I understand you want to do that, but it's, you can't really do that, because you can't predict the weather, you can't predict, you know, a lot of different things, you know, on that. You can put a schedule, this is fine, if you want, put a schedule, you can, but then you can go back to, well, well, it rained on this mission, well, I'm not done with you, the people have seen the blades still over here, well, they didn't do mine. We work as needed all over the county. And the dollars are fine, and we'll leave, but then we'll take it. And there's ruts, that's what blades need to be, you know, but it's unsafe for the public. Other roads, come on, so, have ruts like this, it's just skimming the road, and they, the crime of the road being that much rut. And there's ruts like this in other roads. So I'm just saying, it's not, we do it as needed most of the time, you know?
Sometimes we can do three miles a day, sometimes we can do seven. It depends on how long the road is. Let's say like the Grancho Grande or in subdivisions. There's no way we can do eight, 10 miles a day. You got intersections, you got stops, you got, you got to do your intersections. You're going to do maybe a mile, maybe two a day, or two or three. On a straight road like in Encino, Corona, you can do seven, 10, eight miles. Up all the way across and dump it in the ditch, you can do that. Here in interior roads, it takes a while, it burns more fuel. You're going in reverse, you're not staying forward, you're going forward and reverse. Always using reverse, you're going to burn more fuel. You're going to burn more fuel in interior roads than you will on a long road. It's all, it's all depending on where you're at and what you're doing, building or just taking it across. Now, if you all would like, say, taking our picks over, and we're going to blade those a mile a day or whatever, well, we'll just all pick it up from the ditch, and take it straight across and dump it in the other side. Which the public says, "Ooh, all the gravel's on the other side of the ditch."
So basically, I think, maybe to sum it up and correct me if I'm wrong, if we, commissioners say, if we take your, the pickups away, we feel like we're going to be able to save on fuel costs. That's one side of the table, one side of the argument. Now, what I'm hearing from the staff then is if we take the vehicles away, we're not going to save money and the quality of our roads are going to decrease?
The quantity.
The quantity.
Quantity?
Quantity, quantity.
So the amount of road that you're able to take care of is going to decrease?
Yeah, you have a downtime.
Quality's fine, quality is fine, but when it rains that next day, then you got to go back and do it. You're not progressive, you're not going forward.
Well, what I, Martin, when I, when I started here two years ago, I was on the blade for two months straight to finish my district. Every day, all day, and it gets, it gets to you sometimes, you know? Because you're just, that's all you're trying to do is, is build these roads back up.
For the public, for the people.
You know, and it usually takes me about a month to just go and pull a ditch and make it through my place, you know, through my district. You know, and that's trying to keep them up. And that's just pulling one ditch, you're not pulling back, you're not cutting weeds, you're not, you're not pulling book ditches. You know, it, it takes a long time.
What we're saying, Dick, is we need all the hours on the blade.
You need a whole bunch of hours sometimes. And we don't say, "Hey, Martin," or, "Hey, Leonard," you know, "I work till seven o'clock." No. We work because we can't finish the road, we can't leave a windmill in the middle of the road. We don't have the signs out there. You know, I mean, we have our, our regular signs, but what's that going to, somebody get the signs and throw it away, they're going to run it over anyway. You know, it just, it just, it's, it's up to us, we can, we're going to shut down no matter what. That's what I'm, that's what, that's what it's going to come to. We, wherever we're at, we're going to shut it down and go park, you know, and we're going to have to come back here. Instead of saying, "All right, 5:30," well, that's what we usually, we end, 5:30, and then we go to our pickups. You know, and we leave. I don't know, I just, but that doesn't mean we're always on our district. You know, we can be halfway through and we're, we're in another district because one of the boys are sick, or they're off for a vacation or whatever, and we got to go do their roads. You know, so the, our blades don't stay in the same spots half the time, you know, through the, through the summer or the winter months. That's another thing.
I got a question on that, I was just thinking, like, which are very, you know, the exceptions, I don't know, short ones coming in, and we'll be allowed to take home our, our county vehicles, say, if that's an exception, but what do we do with our personal pickups? I don't feel comfortable leaving my personal pickup here. I mean, it's kind of a catch 2020, where, where does the exception lie? Because I can't leave my personal pickup here, take a company vehicle home and leave my personal pickup here for three, four, five days or a day or whatever it may be, I mean, that's another question that I kind of have. I mean, the exceptions are kind of not part of the way to get around. You can't just, I'll just take our company vehicle home because we have a personal vehicle, personal stuff, our vehicles, and just leave them here, you know? I don't know how the exception would work on that either.
Again, it's, you know, we're asking things that, that need to be worked out, you know, on that. But for a little clarification, I know it's, I use the highway department quite a bit as a comparison. But to give you a background, I started out working for the county right out of high school. And I worked for five years and worked my way up to the blade. And then from there, I went to work for a private contractor, and I worked my way up to the Blue Topper. I laid most of the flex around the loop of Lubbock. And that's before we had lay-down machines and everything, where we had a quarter-inch tolerance. So when you're talking about running a blade, and you're talking about how many miles you can get and warm-up time and all of that, I've been there, done that. So when I'm talking about, you know, you're saying that you need eight to 10 hours. Uh, what I'm sitting looking at is we're talking about another 15-minute warm-up time of the county vehicle while it's parked here. You're still going to warm up the trucks, you're still going to have the same, if you have a flat, have to bring it in, have to cut down. You're still going to have the, a warm-up of the blade when you get out there, no matter whether you leave your house or whether you leave this yard. Our decision is, are we letting you commute? And can we save that commuting? And we, that versus your response time? And we, that versus your response time, I've listened to that. I've listened to what you've talked about as far as emergencies, different things, and that gives me better ideas. But uh, as far as working on the equipment, there's not a piece of equipment that I have not run. There's not a piece of equipment that I did not train at the training academy for the highway department, that I worked there for three years, first coming on. I worked in risk management the last seven, uh, seventeen years, so it was mostly administration. So, you know, I know I sound like one of these old farts that, you know, all of a sudden wanna tell you how much they know versus what you know. But every one of you probably know a lot more than I do and different things. But to say that I compare it with the highway department, we're totally different than the highway department, and I realize that. But I do have the experience in both to know how the county works. And I have stopped several of you on blades and spoke with you about your work and what you were doing. And so, you know, as far as going out and taking a look at things, I do drive my roads in the district, in my district. Uh, Martin, in the District One through Six, and I have no idea how you classify those as districts. We up here have three districts.
Yeah, Bobby, I have ten different areas, so we, we do ten different blade districts as well.
You know, when I look, when I look at the road math, you know, I can see that I could probably get by with two blades all the time. With the mileage that I have in my district, District One. Uh, the other two districts I think need the majority because they have a lot more, um, gravel roads than I do. And so I think it needs to be concentrated on them. When we're talking about who blades what roads, you know, it's, I know Francisco, right? Yeah, but I've spoke about blading in District Two and blading over there. So, you know, I I might not get out to the other districts, and I probably should, because I've realized that Commissioner Chavis has a lot more problems than than I could ever think of during adverse weather. And that was discovered when she was in dire need of blades and talking to Martin and Leonard and shifting them over, which y'all did a great job of doing. But again, you have to understand, looking at this, we're looking at the commuting. Not as far as, I mean, when, uh, it was revealed that we have a guy commuting one block, you know? All of you, how can you justify that, really?
My pay doesn't change.
What's that?
My pay didn't change, and it's more convenient at three o'clock in the morning to jump out into the vehicle than to walk over here, open the gates, jump in the vehicle, and then take off.
How many times have you had to get out at three o'clock in the morning?
Numerous times.
Numerous as, in a year, in a year total?
This year. When we chip seal, I'll go out, when we have snowstorms, I'll go out and I'll be on my roads by three o'clock in the morning to park, all of us.
But I mean, to park, park at a block away to us sitting up here, I cannot see that.
Okay, well, I'm actually uh, paying, I believe, three dollars and fifty cents a day. You guys are actually making money off of the vehicle like that. Because I don't use a gallon of fuel going back to work at the house, so we commute there.
We're talking about fuel consumption, on my, if I drive here every day to Estancia, I live twenty-four, twenty-four and a half miles away from Estancia. To where if I go, for this, I drive and we have, if I'm on blade, put up signs, no more than ten minutes. And, I mean, that's, that's fifteen miles each way, you know, that's thirty miles a day more I put on if I drove to Estancia every day. I don't know how the other guys, how far they live or whatnot, but that's just on my commute. I live that far, and I know I travel each day, my closest is four and a half miles from the house. And we've been there this year to where we actually worked at, we're probably, oh, two months straight, you know, at the Indian Fire Station. We all gravel there, we chip seal down there, we, I mean, if, you name it, we worked under fire for a good two months, and that was up, four and a half hours from you, from my house to Indian Fire Station every day. On the other hand, if I had to travel a year every day, it would be that much more. Instead of twenty-four miles, it'd be twenty miles each way I'd be putting up, just, I'll be there now. On that finish.
I understand you have a ton of standard, standard county money, or what, or else? You get, you know, make that much money, you get that, that takes, you know, that, that, that's more than we have to spend on our property. We have bills too that we have to pay. And so, I still think we're taking some of our cashes away from us, because our vehicles are going to lose. We don't, make that much money here.
I have nothing. None too.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Thank you for that. Joy, any closing comment?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you with that, um, yes.
Been with the association now for six years, I think, now. We talk to all the other counties. State of fuel is more on us, I guess, on all of us, because we've learned to spoil the public. We are one of the only counties that blames the roads as much as we do. They're, all their laws are once a year to be on their road. Twice as often. We're on our roads every month, every day. Blading nonstop, we're going by cutting, saying, how do you guys know there's so many cutting edges? Because we blade, that's what we're there for. You know, if we're gonna save money, well, that's the way to save money, just cut it down, we'll get you roads twice a year, that gives us time to do other things. Fuel cost will drop way down because the blades are only running twice a year, three times a year, and that is it, instead of every day. And that's why all these other counties, and you talk to them, that's, I mean, that's still their policy. Is once a year is that, if they get more than that, that's a benefit to the public, because we're there more than once. And not as we, if they call us today, we're there tomorrow.
Are these counties the same size as ours?
Some will be.
And that is a fact, I've asked John here, because they have asked me personally, why do you guys use so much cutting edges? And we are the number one purchaser of cutting edges from county ground, we do this there. And that was just told to me through the tour.
Okay, well, thank you guys for being here. Um, with that, I don't think there was any other issue listed on the agenda, so I will call for a motion to adjourn.
So, wait.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? Seeing that all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, we're now adjourned.